Okay, we're just gonna wait for Jack to join us and then he'll tell. Is there anybody here for public comment on an item not on the agenda? Alright. Chris, is anybody gonna be here for the SEIU discussion? And you'll be presenting that? Yeah, polls close in fifteen minutes, so if anybody sitting at home hasn't voted yet. We still, we've actually had a reasonable turnout.
About your rule?
As I heard, it was what?
Seventeen percent, sixty.
Creepin' towards twenty.
Creepin' towards twenty, which is not great, but it's not bad for a relatively protested primary, uh, a day after holiday. So, um, okay, so the first thing on our agenda, we were in executive session discussing some things, and, um, the first thing on our agenda tonight is, um, a vote of the board on a memorandum of understanding for settlement of the SEIU clerical contract. Chris?
I am happy to announce the first official settlement of a contract on the town side for the cycling of the SEIU local A D A public clerical union. The base rate is two percent, uh, for each of the three years of the contract. Um, the, uh, there's a new position recognized under the agreement, uh, which is the admin assistant of the affairs and just previously stated. There is, um, some tweaks to the ability to use personal leave, limited service expenses, and, um, there are two positions that are being upgraded, uh, from G, which is the base lowest level of, uh, of paying in, under this contract, which means those are two assistants that work under permanent inspection. And as part of that, we're not gonna be filling a third position, which is a position still be there. And, uh, there is a time and a set of laws on the experiment with, it's over eighteen months, so any revenue that tires with ninety days notice, uh, the later in December, uh, thirty first, two thousand, uh, it's, uh, it's a really, uh, two thousand, uh, overtime.
Does the board have any questions?
Nope.
Um, is there a motion to, is it an approval or is it a replication or?
Uh, yeah, the union is, but the vote, well, I didn't say it was, but the union voting unanimously in support of this. Uh, and, uh, it's in front of you for, uh, presentation.
Uh, want to do the motion? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I think we have to sign it?
One, I mean, uh, you have to, so we can form into a.
Exactly. Um, okay, so we're still, um, while this is going down the board, we're, um, um, our signatures will move on and then ask each other item, which is committee appointments. So there's still our, our committee, um, vacancies out there and some changes that are happening at some of the levels, but, um, we do have, um, four committees that we can, uh, make appointments to tonight. We've met, um, I think, almost all of these people here over the, um, maybe except the last one for affordable housing, but these are people that have submitted applications for positions, um, came in before us sometime in July, and, um, I don't know who's here now, but, um, for the historical commission, um, the original agenda, by the way, said historical society, I want to clarify that this is the historical commission, which is a town entity, um, and not an independent nonprofit society. So for the historical commission, um, the, uh, recommended appointees are Noah Collins and Merle Brown. Is Noah in here?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so if anybody would like to make a motion to appoint Noah Collins and Merle Brown?
So, sorry.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Um, next one is the Cohasset Cultural Council, Megan McAlick, is Megan here?
Yeah.
Um, is there a motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, the open space committee, Dustin Nasha, um, is there a motion? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, the affordable housing committee, there's one position, Melissa Weaver. Any motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, good. Uh, I think there's one other committee that we have to do some additional appointments to. That's Cohasset Culture District, that we'll try to get that taken care of in the next couple of weeks. Um, now, I would like to invite up the cable advisory committee. If you can all come up and introduce yourselves first and, um, and then hold the slide.
Good evening, Board of Selectmen, I'm Nicole Rayner with the chair of cable advisory, and this is Dawn Boyne, our program manager, stage manager at C C T V.
Go.
Our first piece of business is share with your two thousand seventeen financials, and we have handouts here. Uh, we had a long transition from last year, we had to sort out some new data. Our bookkeeper had abruptly resigned, so it took some time to search and kind of take and tie back, um, the financials. So we have closed out, um, our two thousand seventeen year. However, we still have, um, to read, we still have a few things that we have to finalize on, and, um, we need to get back to the bookkeeper on behalf of expenditures and to perjury schedule to make a final. But I wanted to give it to you, um, basically our revenues from our legal fees have been about a hundred thirty eight thousand for two thousand seventeen. We had expenditures of eighty nine thousand five hundred, and we had, um, cash on bill of worth forty nine thousand, which was positive from the year prior, um, the second date we were in negative.
What changed?
Um, what changed?
It took the cash on cost.
Cash on cost.
Well, I mean, we had a lot of expenses that weren't officially listed. Um, there was slow paying, like, slow coming in, one being the senior center. Once we made sure how much we were paying them, we just had to replace two of those carousel service, which we mentioned last time, through, on the last week, we replaced those in, uh, last November. So we did have expenses that we kind of knew they were coming in, but didn't know when they were. January, December sixteen, and January, December seventeen, shows a very strong influence of thirty eight percent, uh, in Cable Horizon, which, what's the motion? I think some of this occurs that the check was, by the way, it's a good thing, let's see. It's good, but, um, it came in unexpected, it was late coming in, when we changed the, uh, the accountant here, town, didn't know, had the money in hand, but. Was it dispersed here? So a little timing issue here with this?
Is it possible there's some sixteen revenues in seven, so?
It's possible, yeah.
So that might flatten out again, right?
Right, exactly. Well, you, you would account for about seventy five percent of cash.
Yeah.
That's, well, no, no, it's just the, the, the man.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We just deposited sixty eight thousand today. Wow. So it's not, it, it, Chris, uh, is, is our, did our finance group not post in the proper account upon December sixteen? Is that a reason?
I don't know, uh, that's, uh, because we don't keep any online, it comes to the town, it gets passed along.
No, 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 again, we're just, we're not booking, if it's not booked in the proper account, they don't know they have it.
See what I'm saying, so sixteen, if they didn't do the paperwork, they booked it in seventeen. What it does is it just distorts the, the, the financials, right, and that's not good for planning.
Yep, so we are due for an audit every, uh, number of several, seven years. So we should go ahead and work towards a settlement to our audit.
Yeah.
I was back, we've done it, there's, there's been a long transition, there's been a few people here that slept there, um, so there is some question about that. But we've had the same fee, um, it's a step down ladder of revenues of cable, days over ten years, so we start high, then goes down.
Yeah, there, 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 what was behind the light? Yeah, my, what, you have my question, is if there's, there's a, a blood based cash trend unplugged, and it is cable uses is, is falling. And so I'm looking at the revenues that appear to be climbing, questioning whether or not it's sustained. Uh, if not, then, uh, you know, from the perspective of continuing to turn, toward television, we're going to find and have a lot of noise this way.
Well, they're very healthy, I mean, they've got three hundred thousand dollars to retain, right, so, you have plenty of savings, it's not like.
We feel that we have one good, real contract that we can afford with, that will last up like ten years, um, and definitely be healthy. And then, and then to the, to the change, it's not just a change, it's a change, regular change. I think that, uh, in this process that we're gonna report with, which is our next piece of business is, you know, renewing the contracts, we're, uh, uh, processes as well.
So, before we, before we go to that, because that's the next, that is the next piece for us tonight, uh, but two, two quick questions. One is, Chris, we have to, I think we have to adopt this, we have to vote to accept this.
I think it would accept.
Report, although it's not finalized, because we do want to get our hands on the compensation schedules, uh, and also, if I can answer any questions, you guys have a valid budget for it, and so I have to have that finalized. Okay, so, let's do that, and then, yeah.
We also put together something, it's, it's got so many variables that we didn't, we just call it a draft.
So this is our budget forecast that we're proposing to two thousand twenty five, I think. Um, it is preliminary, we're going to have a capital plan assessment of our legal equipment. We differentiate our equipment every eight years, so we already appreciate it from the last ten years, um, and we're due to, we're operating. So we are gonna bring in the E P of our vendor I G S, which is three group services, um, Marty Feldman. And he's gonna do a free assessment, um, help us understand where, where our, where our necessary.
And how would we do business like this?
Yeah.
The Marty Feldman, we all, right, right, we all just, we all just went to the bullseye, guy. Sorry.
I don't know.
And, so this is.
Walk this way.
Yeah, this is a good way to transition to, to contract discussions, but one quick question I have is, where is your committee in terms of bodies and, and, um, the composition?
We currently have four, um, members of our provider committee.
Four members, and then there's a secondary board, is that right?
It's, it's basically the same board, different names.
Right. Okay.
One is cable advisory, one's cable commission.
Right.
And I, I don't know why it started that way, that's, now we have nobody of the original board, uh, oh, we do, don't we? I'm sorry.
Hall Council still.
Oh, no, nobody's out with us now, so he's, so, but, um, we knew that to structure the two cable providers back in two thousand eleven, they were called one thing, then when they started the cable committee, it's basically the same people who were involved.
Okay.
And if at some point you wanted to change that, I think that's a town decision, and I think we wouldn't be happy for that.
I asked, because I want to, right, I want to stay on top of these kinds of weird committees that even need to be addressed one by one, so, great, thanks.
It's less confusion.
So do you want to move on to the, the?
Sure, um, can I hand out?
I did.
Here's a copy of the, okay, great. So our next list I have is, um, on behalf of the cable advisor committee, we'd like to recommend, um, making a recommendation to Town of Pass to retain William H. Solomon, um, for special counsel, uh, to negotiate the middle of the Town of Pass and cable contracts with Verizon and Comcast. William brings over thirty years of experience in Commonwealth, thirty years of experience as town council with the Town of Stoner. Um, he's negotiated over a hundred legal contracts, um, in the following months, yes. Um, he's also been successful at negotiating some, uh, some Jason cities and nearby cities, such as holding, um, constituent cases in Milton. Um, and William is, um, chair of the, he's very confident that he can get us, um, a bump up in our, our financial grants and funding, and also prepare to, to, to get a good license.
How'd you find this guy?
Um, he was highly recommended through other local towns and their current directors.
I took, I took part of the contract.
Of course.
I, I met him, and I, I, I actually, so Rob Hillman had done the work for us in the past, he's now the advisor, so he's a big part of it. But he said that's what Bill does, so if he'll step down as, as council, just, all he does now to keep contracts out of state. So we met with him, I mean, and again, you, you can see it just literally, he hit banked out, you know, all the points he was gonna hit and all that. I mean, he knew this, uh, cold, uh, side up for, 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 for.
Does, does he, on behalf of you, does he negotiate separately with Verizon and then separately with Comcast, and wherever that?
Yeah, what he's doing is actually going in, he has his templates, he knows the common contracts, the wording, he knows how we're gonna react to things, and he knows how to negotiate on the side too.
So we're gonna get a new fire truck?
Uh, we're gonna.
That's a joke.
Maybe we're gonna get a drill, maybe we're gonna drill.
Tell me his last name again?
Solomon.
Solomon. William H. Solomon.
What'd you see?
He has not a website, but he has, um, he's in the.
So we need, um, we need a motion to approve it, special counsel for the purpose of the cable contract negotiations.
What's the cost on this?
So, um, he estimated services, um, time is minimum thirty hours for each contract, up to a hundred twenty eight hours total, one hundred seventy dollars.
The contract is, is one seventy an hour, and is also, uh, and he's gotta go over, he has to get pre-approved to go.
So if the estimate is one seventy an hour, and you do thirty hours.
Contract, contract, minimum.
So what's, so what is that, about fifty thousand on contract?
Thirty one thousand, max.
Thirty one thousand for one contract, huh?
Max, triple.
And that's something you budgeted for in your F Y eighteen, nineteen, whatever we're in.
Um, we, we did budget in our, our costs.
No, but you have funding to set aside for this.
Well, what we understand is that we, they're being retained by the Town of Pass, and then that we are not allowed to give all the, the services to them to us.
Oh, okay.
Um, but that's also not a top.
So, so we're doing that through our procurement, is that correct? You want me to, who's paying?
I didn't get to work through who's paying.
That's my question, so we, so we, the Board of Selectmen, the only one that can authorize these, is a special counsel, so that's, that's the first step. Second step is, where is the, where's the money coming from?
And our understanding was that Town of Pass, it was.
I was there last time.
Yeah, but I think we need to look at that, because, I mean, you.
It'd be hard to justify that, sit in a town.
Yeah, actually, you're right, my mind.
As a, as a separate, as well, as a separate, and it is a separate enterprise, like, uh, there's really no co-mingling of your enterprise and the Town of Cohasset, other than.
Except that they agree, the contract is actually with, you know.
Okay, so we need to figure that out.
Yeah.
At the same.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the, the license agreements over the Town of Cohasset, uh, you should, you have permission to power the mission.
Right, right.
But if we're looking at, say, similar structures, with, uh, re-engaged special counsel last time we negotiated, one in March, it actually, actually has some, this was very contentious.
Right.
Uh, whether or not there's a, a higher special counsel, uh, but ultimately, it was pretty, a lot.
They're also an absurdly elected body.
No, 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 but this is, there are.
I don't, I'm not arguing it, I think we need to figure it out.
I, I, it's not, I, I. This is not.
Excuse me, but in addition, in, in addition, if we're responsible, because it's, to us, we can't leave these, and that three hundred fifty, that would be a bummer, yeah, but, you know what I'm thinking?
It's actually, well, I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't see why it wouldn't.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm, it's twelve thousand, it's twelve.
Mammal.
The, the, thirty times one seventy.
Times two.
Ten times one seventy is, uh, seventy.
But I think, I think the analogy between the water department negotiating, special counsel paying for it, and the cable committee is pretty accurate, right? You know, this is their business, and it's, helps them function.
Let me follow more on, I, I do think that Mr. Solomon is a choice.
Is, is there, is there any reason why we need to take action tonight, at least on the appointment of, or?
Um.
Or, or, or is this, is there, what's the, what's your timetable, let's go there.
So our first contract is, um, needs to be renewed by April, our contract expires in two thousand nineteen.
We, we can come back in two weeks.
Okay.
But, but we do need a six month.
Window.
Bridge between when it's agreed upon and when we sign our licenses.
We can, we can come back, like, in October, and just have, just make sure we understand clearly who's paying for the bill, and then we can make the authorization of our special counsel.
I'd like to have a broader discussion, though, on, since we're doing that, I mean, I, because this, this falls under the bucket of one of those things, I think we brought up a few months ago, about the new funds around town, and fully audited and accounted for, so, putting that aside, this is a little too nebulous for my comfort on behalf of the citizens of the town. I think we ought to have an explanation legally and accounting wise as to what our relationship is in terms of all these funds and all these activities we pay for what, so I think that, that our discussion in October should be broader than just, who's gonna pay the legal bill, and then they can understand this whole resource and all this funding, like, who controls this money, and who's laying out the strategic plan for the future, and so forth, and so on, so I, I.
It's been a while since we did that, yeah.
So, so for example, and this is also a very important area, because this is their total communications, you know, in the entire town, this is a vital organ, so I think we should get our hands on this.
So, so, and here's, like, just briefly, here's one of the issues, one of the issues is, and documents, I mean, do we put them on our general ledger? You know, instead of running an independent accounting package for the, what, why are we allowed to do it?
You have to have a separate entity, um, it's, it's a regulation, you have to have a separate entity to manage that, that, that.
You need separate legal entity to manage the, uh.
Yeah, yes.
Yep.
And I have all the historical contracts and documents under my address.
So, Chris, I mean, so, so the licenses between us and the, the vendor, and then they carved out a, they carved out a legal entity that's separate from the town to administer the service and collect the fees?
Well, actually, I'd, I'd actually ask the question simply, because the town, is there this license between vendor and the town, or license between vendor and the cable?
And in my case, experience, I mean, I was with, through the member of the town, and we had a contract, cable, and a contract. It's federal regulations, we don't have, there's something in state regulations. Well, could be different. The license, well, it's on town, pulls, kind of ends in town, so, the cable, uh, commission runs, uh, it, 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 program, editing program, and all that, and the board links delivers, um, the actual agreement is between the, the vendor and, and the.
But we also adopt and approve the budgets, um.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm.
But they, right.
Yeah, I'm talking about the.
No, I know, but there's.
No, but, so, so let's, I mean, look, so I go back to my original question, is, where is the legalese that says, you know, they have to have a separate budget, you know, with a separate account?
It's outlined in the contracts.
What contracts are that?
It is the, um, cable contracts.
Between the town and the Verizon?
Between town and the Verizon and Comcast separately.
So, you know, we can change that, I mean, I, when you start getting up to big money like this, and you're late, you know, filing paperwork, and, and, look, you guys do a great job, so don't take this as criticism, because it's not.
I can't, I can't contact Verizon and Comcast on behalf of Town of Cohasset.
I understand, so I totally, I, I.
We need a contract rather than between C C T V and.
I totally get it, this is a, a totally different conversation. So we've spent the last, just to give you context, we've spent the last ten years fighting, you know, these buckets of cash that, we're trying to centralize everything and manage it, that's why we brought a professional like Dawn on to make sure that there's, you know, the cash is accounted for and it's not correct, and it's all audited. So I'm asking the question, you know, why would cable advisory be different? And I'm not sure we have an answer yet, so it has nothing to do with you guys, it has nothing to do with the way you run the program.
I understand.
We love it, we know what a great job you do, this is really about us doing our fiscal due diligence.
So, let me ask you a question about your, uh, audit process, how, how and when does that kick off?
So we are required every four years to do a thorough, a broad spectrum overview, we use Powers and Sullivan, and that also, I, we do one, uh, to our last spot, so it's been four years, and we're doing it inside a whole team here, transitioning, you know, a lot of materials left, a lot of data, and processes, and sort of, and that's the volume.
Right. Right.
We've got a lot of good material, yeah, it's good, um, but that's our next thing that I have to achieve with our, to go ahead and do that, because that's money about a thousand dollars.
I, I just, I just wonder if, you know, if, if it's clear that the board just wants a bigger picture, better understanding of how this whole structure works and how we interface with it, so I, I'm just wondering, you know, we're gonna have powers come in probably in October, I don't, you know, and I was gonna say, if you're, if you're in the process of retaining them or whatever, we might figure that out, but, we'll do that behind the scenes and figure out how best to roll out the best conversations so we all understand. Steve?
In the meantime. Point of clarification, while we are concerned about how council and special council pay, are we comfortable with the remediation for the emphasis?
Yes, but, let's get these other issues, I mean, I, I, we, we could say it's okay to start talking to this person, but can't do anything.
Well, for, for, I, I doubt, you know, without, uh, without execution, it's actually, that would happen, you know, my point is that, that Dawn's, Dawn expressed the concern with respect to timing.
Right.
Uh, in negotiations, if, if the, if the council, the council were to understand, the, uh, the town has to figure out who's, who's ready to check, otherwise, we're finding no issue with his engagement. At the very least, his calendar might get a, you know, get a, get a slot locked up for that future, so if I wonder if signaling at this point.
I, I, I would be comfortable with that, I don't have a question.
Well, I think we can get a quick answer for this, I mean, I don't think this is, gotta be hard to figure out, right? So can we, can we just put this on for next week and vote it through, and vote it go up?
Well, our, our, we're not, we're not meeting as a business meeting next week, so the eighteenth, we could do that. Because at the eighteenth, we're gonna be doing a lot of, uh, meeting with a lot of committees and really.
There is one item that I might use that you can consider.
Okay.
It's another contract.
Okay. Okay, so let's just see where, if we can get some information on, you know.
If it's like, with any other things, we can.
Okay.
Again, I don't, I don't want to take up time, I mean, I'm just trying to. If I can get something written prepared and distributed along with that, those questions.
Alright. Alright, is everybody comfortable, so we'll, we'll deal with special counsel as soon as we possibly can, and once we have some idea of, you know, what the typical process of payment is, and then we will have a more wholesome conversation on, so we have better understand how they operate.
So what's the target here?
Eighteenth, the latest.
I can't sit here and tell you what our contracts say, because we do, yeah, absolute legal contracts, um, we have, so, uh.
No, that's, that's, that's our question.
Yeah, it's not on you, on us.
But I did read them all, and they're all, it's all there.
Plenty to consider.
See, the issue is, is you can't have Verizon telling us how we pay our bills, right? Unless there's language in the F C C contract, it says, and then even then, it's not federal, it's state, so this needs to get unwound, and we need to figure out what really is going on with it. My guess is, my, I'm just, off the top of my head, my guess is, um, we're gonna fight interesting issues. I believe in that.
I probably could, you know, leave this on table two, because I know that the Town of Stoner have actually held a certain percentage of each of, obviously, we can't, people at their own, um, in their own bank account, pass the rest of their to that.
We just need to find out why they do what they do.
In that way, that would be administrative for them to, you guys to keep and retain, that's it.
They did it for a reason, so we just need to find out.
Our finance directors.
I was just gonna say, I mean, our finance, we don't need to go into this now, but our finance directors probably have experience when it goes on, so.
Yep.
When we have this conversation, maybe Don can.
Yeah.
Come up here and give us some education, I'm particularly interested in what are our towns knowing?
Yeah.
You must understand the issue that we're talking about, so it's a good point she is making, man, we involve our expert, we have in-house on this too. Clearly those, you obviously think it's a state.
The powers will all.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
We're good, but I'll hold off on the audit then, if you guys are doing something special with town, you wanna make a recommendation, just send it to us, we should go there and put that on. If you want us to hold off.
I, no, no, I don't see any reason for you to hold off, I think it's, you know, we, that's who we use.
We've been doing it for four years, right?
Yeah. They've done, they did it four years ago when I was here, so.
Yeah, also next year I have to renew our next classified contract with the town's CCTV. So that's up there, also part of the measures, and so we are just having to. So if you don't want it accepted, we can reorganize it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Cause you can push off, you can just push off.
Yep. They don't need our authorization, I can, on the audit.
It's really for us to do, just not.
Go for it, sooner the better.
All right.
Here we go.
All right, we'll be in touch real soon, thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, all the work you do.
Very much, thank you all your hard work.
Thanks, Matt. So Chris, you're, you know what we need?
Yes, of course.
Um, next up are licenses, permits and audits, so the first one is Saint Stephen's Parish picnic, which is on September twenty third, is anybody here from Saint Stephen's? Hello?
Yeah, hi, I'm Sam, uh.
Well, you talked, just open it to scroll till, so I can find your application, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I'm Sam P., I'm senior warden of Saint Stephen's, which is the senior labor scene. Uh, and we typically, we always have this picnic, um, and what we're asking for is to close off the street closest to the church. Um, the end of, um, between the duck pond and the church. And it's basically from first thing in the morning till around, well, afternoon. And and the police, the H P W, typically have been wonderful about giving us, you know, barriers. And we have a. Bouncy house, uh, known as ice cream truck, you know, and a bunch of other stuff. We'll have a long table right down the street with chivers and. Grills and usual picnic area.
That's great, so they're asking for permission to use the, the town common that's kind of on the opposite side of the road, close the road off. From about eight AM to three PM on the twenty third, which is a Sunday.
Sunday. Yeah.
If you have any questions.
Oh, great, yeah, I'm sorry, she might be, type direction of one minute, but, no, um. That has been recently renovated by, um.
Yes.
Thanks, we, we do.
And no mechanical rides?
Other, I don't think a bouncy house is a mechanic.
That might, that, that became a hindrance to me three years ago, okay.
I, I'm not sure.
I'm just having so fun, uh, okay, is there a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen Saint Stephen's Parish on?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye, great, you're all set, thanks Sam.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, it's your.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thanks for waiting for us. Next up is the Holly Hill Farm, farm to table dinner on the twenty second, is anybody here from Holly Hill? All right. Um, let me just get to that. This is the second of the three farm to table dinners, Saturday, September twenty second, they're looking for a one day legal license, um, Chef Kane Callahan. Top selectmen, um, employed at meetings and. Be on Saturday, September twenty second, from six to ten PM at Holly Hill Farm, is there a? There's seconds?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And next is the Sailing Club Boat Storage License, Chris?
Uh, so. For some time. Informly, you said for prime time, so it's, it's stupid pictures, it's crazy, it's very bad. Kind of tried the next off. Letter from. Um, Commodore, I'm sorry. And, uh, so if you know the Light Keepers parking lot in the back, there's a little racing hatch. They'd like to be able to store six boats on their trail, I don't know which ones they use for their. Apparently it's a store that was in college, probably, I can't remember. And if, I I don't think for the winter, it's not much of a problem, I don't, I don't think having to do that forever is. So, at this time, you have a, a sort of, you sit there and you drain your weapons about. Informal. That said, I think it's something. So, I have a draft license for the case, which a lot of them store the boats there between October and May.
And and these boats are owned by the Sailing Club?
They're S, yeah, they're, they're Sailing Club boats used for the boats, I believe they're the ones that used to be on the port main street. Yeah, uh, but they also use the, I think they, I think they're the ones that the. Instructors around, watch.
Shields boats.
Yeah.
Cheese boats.
Thank you.
In in this case, uh, just step back for a second, Sailing Club is a, it's an independent five oh one C three. So the town gives the nod to the five oh one C three, which is on the concept that the five oh one C three benefits the town. How about another five oh one C three? Needs to place the storage place. What sort of response will it be?
That's the reason it's in front of you, in front of me.
I have, it's, it's a rhetorical question.
Okay, so what we could say, if we did approve this, that we should say, language there and say. Uh, these are only approved, uh, approved on an as case basis, not to be generalized. And and the agreement shouldn't be longer than a year.
This is a license, it's revocable at will, it'll last forever, and it'll, and it only would expire automatically. By the end of that.
But the language says it's expired at many rates.
Yeah, but also it's a license, it's not a lease, so it's revocable. Or whatever reason they have it.
So, but the answer to Steve's question is almost just say. When we address issues like this, they're not to be considered precedent, that these are done on a case by case basis. And then, and then the answer to Steve's question, we've discussed, well, is this the where they, do we wanna bother doing that, or do this, whereas we wouldn't do if someone came up with something else, it's totally out of discretion.
Jack?
Has anybody talked to the Light Keepers Board about doing this and asked them what they think about this?
Um. I know that I'll pull a more screen to go for the sun. They haven't formally, just in the past. No, 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 I, I know, I, I know, so, I'm not.
They run, they run weddings out there, they run events, this summer, that parking lot was, they had people parking on the grass, and the use of that parking lot has. Grew tremendously over the last year.
In my experience in the winter, it's not as, you know, with. Like you mentioned earlier. I, I just, I, I just would like to draw the advocate, if somebody talked to the Light Keepers Board about this and get their. I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not aware of it.
Yep.
I can.
So, and and just, just to be, just for clarity purposes, so this wouldn't be taking up any space in the parking lot, right?
No, it's, it's the, it's the grass bound, but as Jack points out, I've been there when the grass is used.
I agree that, you know, maybe we just let them know that the board is considering this, I think it's only fair, the truth of the matter is, the Sailing Club. The Light Keepers and this parking lot are all town property, so even if they stored them at the Sailing Club, it's town property, you know, that we've, we've licensed or whatever for them.
I'm, I'm assuming that the, the reasoning behind not storing it on the Sailing Club property is that it's adjacent to the water.
Right.
It's still on.
I also, I also think it's visually very.
Well, let's go, let's get back to that, so I come back around to the same question. C S C R is a five oh one C three.
Yep.
Maritime is a two six five oh one C three. What if they come to the town and say, look, we're open to every member of the town. We need a place to store our. Our, our role.
Shell Scouse.
One of the big ones. Oh, doesn't matter.
Oh.
They, they, uh, where I'm going, where, where we could find ourselves pretty quickly is being questioned as to why one gets the model or another. A potential resident should be able to simply look at our inventory of potential storage spaces and offer it out under license that could accommodate. Could accommodate.
And it.
I, and just leave it at, leave it at that, at the moment, we've got someone who's done some footwork and said, gee, we could put them there. Right, but ultimately that nods favoritism toward that one specific five oh one C three. And I, you know, I get it, I understand it, they'd had a solution to their problem prior, they're writing a zoning application. Doesn't work. The town, if we have, if we have the capability of storage as a town. Let's find out where it is, if it's not appropriate to. Everything. In preferred location is suggested by. So, let's offer some solutions if we got that, that's all.
Yeah, interesting point on that is with respect to C M I and C S C R, I think that all of that land is also town land and they store boats there, so. You know, I wonder if maybe this ends up in the harbor committee discussion, so.
Where, where do you put the envelope, between the parking lot and, and not the.
Harbor for masterboat.
Well, there's actually three.
Yeah, it's in the park. Okay.
So, there may be an argument and says, there's a better location generally.
So let's do just a little more due diligence on the town side of things for this.
What do you, uh, I can definitely have some check with Light Keepers.
Yeah, I would like to, I, I would just like to understand, you know, if, if there's space over where they're storing boats, or if they're storing boats over on, um. The end of Parker Ave, and not that, and we get complaints about that too.
Parking lot.
Yeah.
There's a crowd, yeah, there's, I mean.
Steve's old boat's there.
Steve's.
That's a C S C R. They took it up?
No, it's there, it sits there all night.
Oh, yeah, no, but that's the point, is if there's a boat there, in any case, that's fine, we may, we may look at the, the parking lot as hell shit. We may take, we take a look at that, that last elbow and assign the boats to.
Yep.
Or we may agree that everybody could put their boat up in the parking lot.
Right.
Figure out the way to do it, or, or we'll put it up on free day.
Yep. Commercial boat storage.
We may, never know.
So, so let's just figure out what, first of all, you know, let the Light Keepers know that this is under consideration and we just wanna be respectful. It's top property, and then I'll, I'll do a little diligence on what's going on on the other side of the C M I system.
I don't think we have it anywhere else.
Well, it makes sense to keep it down there.
I mean, I'm, I'm not talking about, I don't wanna talk about any of those.
Right.
We're strapped as a virtual buses.
Right, it's a lot easier to just keep it close by, but it's also, I think, ultimately should be a discussion.
Yeah, I mean, there are a lot of, you, you know, it's a very, you know, friendly group and there are a lot of constituents that need to be, you know, talked to. Don't you agree, Madam Shannon?
Sure do. Okay, moving right along, we're a little late, uh, set date for a special town meeting, so right now, uh, Chris, we're talking about having it on Monday, December tenth. Two thousand eighteen special town meeting, um, and you need what from us, an official setting of that and opening the warrant, and can you? Tell us what opening the warrant means?
So pursuant to the, to the bylaw, it's like a seven day, you know, warrant, the warrant is open for seven days, so this is. And, uh, and when the warrant is closed, this is. I hope to have a draft warrant. On what, December nineteenth, two weeks, two weeks.
So, we vote tonight, just so we're open?
Warrant opened, and then we then close. Next Tuesday, we're gonna close business.
You would anticipate it?
Uh, I'm not aware of anything, currently, I mean, I'm probably gonna yield, I'm probably just gonna, something happens. Uh, internally at this point, you know, there's a lot of routine housekeeping stuff, uh. At the end of the year, you've got to do a lot of the works, uh. And it doesn't interest you from cash, it's always some projects that, that pop up and what a lot of. Um, there's some C C C reauthorization for anything, it's expensive money, uh, they have been authorized, project stuff. At this point, there's no zoning change needed because it's a project change, that does have essentially. Because the harbor office. I, I don't think there's any, any. I don't think there's any viable issues there. They couldn't wait this way, it's not as far. And I, it should be a fairly routine, you think? You know, what? Uh.
Yeah, and the, it's, special town meeting has a smaller window before warrant action.
That's right, and, and if the warrant is still, you can still add things.
We can.
It can be serious. What happened is we, we start, both of me to have any issue with it in the paper. Uh, the warrant locks, the, the, it's printed, you know, the, it's giving, it's everything, it's two weeks, it's a tighter time, it's a tighter time. The holiday, skipping all the number one, that out, so. September third, which will be, I mean, it's also, it's a hot summer. And you can't really go in later, it's like.
Um, is there a motion to, um, set the date and open the warrant for a special town meeting on September tenth, two thousand eighteen?
So.
Favor? Aye.
Aye.
Um, so next up, um, next week, we're gonna have, the selectmen are having their, um, annual goals and objectives workshop, and we're gonna. Also discuss the budget message, kind of from a, you know, um. We'll discuss that next week, but in, for tonight, I wanted to put on the agenda the M O and recommendations of the advisory committee, um, so. John, anybody wants to come up and just kind of, this is more for the public audience, uh, let us know, you know, what you imparted to us, we're gonna discuss that in the context of our other financial discussions, um, next week.
And how will be an open meeting here? I think.
I think it's gonna be at Wilka Commons, it's absolutely an open meeting, it's gonna be, yeah, it's more of an observational, because it's really our time to talk amongst ourselves about.
The open, we might, of course. Yeah.
Where we wanna set the priorities for both the next year, that, with the year that we're in, in terms of everything, and then also set the FY twenty budget message, which is what you're.
Right, and perhaps also, um, in the context of goals for this year's sort of strategy. Will, will be part of those discussions?
Yep, and, and Chris and I, and we'll discuss this more as a board next week, you know, we wanna talk a lot about doing everything we can to have. Joint meetings and financial forums and meetings of the minds, so that we're all at least on the same page about what's going on and when.
Right. Yeah, I mentioned this sort of context of goals, being not just sort of this year's goals and the context of goals for the, the longer term. One of the themes, I think, in the recommendations that we've made is to shine a spotlight on areas that have gotten some attention. Sort of get continual attention, but we haven't gotten to the point where we're setting our annual budget, you know, areas. Based on a consistent, considered plan, policy. And they're, obviously, they've gotten a lot of attention areas of capital and O P E, which we mentioned, um. But they, with one exception, I'll come back to, I think. It hasn't been fully based on a plan, a strategic plan of what the town needs long term for capital, some of that, and clearly, or, um, all this stuff. And similarly for O P E, it's been driven by a sense of, we need to be taking action, and we make good progress with doing that. But we haven't come to a clear decision, are we going to fully fund and we're not going to fully fund as a matter of sort of policy and strategy, how are we gonna determine how much we put in every year? Basically, aside from the benefits of, if we, we don't spend our full health insurance allowance with that amount, yeah, it's been. More opportunistic, not entirely, but there's a big element of that there, and a big element of what we're putting into the capital, it's gonna be the same money as what's left over. That's a good policy, but it doesn't, that results in, just to pick a number on the air, seven percent of, of. Capital contribution, seven percent of revenue every year, and looking at the long term capital plan and then charting against other towns, what towns need, ten percent is a better number. Ten percent is a better number than really need to be setting a plan to be heading towards ten percent. The, one area where we haven't had a policy for capital has been sort of the funding of capital stabilization at a town meeting. And that's good, it's not clear that, again, that's added what we respect to the town's long-term capital needs. But it also, um, appears that the way that's been framed is set up, it's sort of gradually underfunded capital because the way that the formula was established doesn't do any real great. It's basically a fixed amount of money. In dollars, which means you're gonna gradually find over time. And if you look at the piece we put together, looking at the last few years and the projection, there are other things going on, so it's not a, a straight line. There's, our analysis anyway, it looks like there's a downward trend, which would be something to pay attention to in this year, so I don't do much of that. But the number, I don't, because our instinct is the number you establish by analysis and plan is more likely higher than what we've been doing to lower. Um, and so, in, until that work gets completed in terms of a, a full capital, um, financing plan, the, we, we don't want that percentage to be reduced. So we recommend that the five percent, which is basically what looks like it's averaged over the last, um, four months.
And, you know, we'll, we'll talk a lot more about this next week amongst ourselves, but I mean, you, I've talked to you about this, I mean, I certainly have a commitment to making sure that the capital plan and Chris's fellow on top of it is really a priority for us as a town. Um, with respect to OPEC, just, just, just address that in particular, um, I know the OPEC committee or the PEB committee, um, because they wanna include more than what's OPEC, which is.
Right.
Health, um, benefit, um, is meeting and they are hoping for some recommendations probably in the springtime, which may or may not impact FY twenty, but it's definitely a big topic that we're all aware of, and they're gonna be presenting just sort of an update. Here's where we're at, here's what we're thinking about doing and maybe recommendations on, um, on our meeting on, on the eighteenth. That's something everybody should pay attention to. And I did say I'm from capital budget to be here tonight just to hear, hear your conversation. I know he got the memo.
Yeah, and he was at one of the meetings where we discussed this.
Yeah.
So I just wanna say, you know, the, the way to do this, and it's, I'm just reinforcing what you said, is you do a five-year forecast for the town. The way to create context for this whole thing is to have a five-year model for the town, where you lay in all these line items and you lay in all these capital forecasts and you run scenario analysis on what we can afford, what we can't afford. And most of the other towns that I'm familiar with, like Wellesley, Dover, the, the advisory committee actually is responsible for maintaining a model like that. And they all have fairly complex, uh, models for, for doing this kind of stuff. And we've never seen, we've made a lot of progress, but we've never seemed to be able to. I mean, I'd like to see, I've said to Chris, I'd like to see advisory take over the model, you know, and make that a big part of what they do as an advisory group. Suggestion.
You can, it's, let's, you know, work on that. Can I tell a tale out of school?
I love the.
Wellesley, um, I was at a, a board meeting with the Wellesley executive director, that's her title, and, um, they do not have a capital.
Yes, they do.
She specifically said they don't. Anyway, so, right, right, right.
They have, they have a chairman of the capital budget committee who's a paid person, who's on salary.
Okay.
I've seen the plan, so that's actually totally inaccurate.
Maybe they're not telling her.
Just wanna say thanks.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
The, the, the type of thought that, that the advisory committee is putting through the comments that you write forward is precisely the area of need that we've had for more than a decade of advisor. And so if you follow through, if your, your committee continues following through on this course, the, the town benefits, uh, simply by asking the question, holding, uh, holding the question out there until it's answered clearly. And if, uh, you know, with clarity, I'm sorry, clearly with, with some force. Will require from this board and others that we gather the discipline, not only to understand how much money we need to gather and spend, but how effective we can do it. And, you know, it's not, to me, it's not about how much we, it, it's not as much the equation as how much we put toward it, putting the line capital. But rather we do it with discipline and we spend it effectively. Likewise with OPEC. I just wanna say thanks for.
And you're always creating context for the discussion. I mean, you know, part of the, part of the, part of the problem with town hall was we had no context to talk about that larger project within the scope of all our financial needs and.
And on that point, I'd like to agree with you about a five-year plan, but suggest that it be in the context of a, I would say twenty or thirty-year strategy. Um, that comes from the town's sort of operational strategy, where it's going, it's the master plan, it's the harbor plan, it's, I mean, everything like that. It's not gonna be as granular going twenty or thirty years out, but given that the life of a lot of important capital items, we have a really big ticket things are twenty, thirty, forty years, um, the strategy with respect to capital plan, particularly if you have ambitions of minimizing switch to debt, has to be that.
I totally agree. You know, and the problem is, is, I, I think it's not a problem, it's just an issue, it's a timing issue. I really think we have to wait until master plan gets a little bit further along, and the harbor plan, so we can start talking about it. And we can do a facilitated strategy session, you know, like, it could be a day, you can do it.
I think you can also do some things, and this may be partly present, may be advisory or somebody else working with Chris, um, things like benchmarking. I started, we started for a thing and talking about that, none of us really know, what is the standard for me as a town, for, for some capital? You know, the, the sort of percentage of your budget that typically goes for capital, obviously that's gonna vary from town to town. But for major functions like public safety, like schools, there ought to be standards out there.
So just so you know, advisory, ten years ago, spent a lot of money. There's a consultant in the New England area that does the benchmarking. They, advisory spent some cash to do benchmarking. And the, the data's around, I mean, I have seven or eight years ago. So people are doing it, it is available. So I don't know what happened to that.
Our.
Right.
Our, um.
It's one of those things.
Closest matching town we have to this place is.
True.
Should we be in terms of capital investment or?
No, in general. In, in, in profile, so the benchmarking piece, I mean, you can, you can call it a benchmark, you just look at three hundred and fifty-one thousand messages and say, well, you used that. Out of the use, man, right?
You're really gonna get the devil this way.
But the difference is between communities can be vast. For instance, the difference between our tax base and Wallo's is enormous. And so when looking at population, when you're in tax base, uh, looking at, uh, uh, historical, temperature, schools, things like that, the closest fit that we have, people, people automatically reflect this, it must be customer. No, it's true. And, uh, it was, it was fascinating when we looked at the, uh, we looked at a variety of different approaches, or different questions, actually, including staffing for, uh, police and fire, how, I mean, how similar the two communities were.
The, the, the difference, and to John's point, is the important thing is to get, get it all together, layer it and run different scenarios.
Right.
Now, because they live on, and it, you know, I would argue that that's a huge piece.
No, but they do have land.
They do, they have farms, but you don't have to do as much infrastructure work. Um, anyway.
Actually, it was interesting, they actually had to do more, because they didn't have a condensed footprint. So whereas we.
Right, they're, we're spread out.
Whereas we could put in.
More roads.
There are miles of road per resident, right, right, right. And that's why I say, be part of the planning, is looking at it function by function.
And one of the things in your recommendations, again, we'll, we'll deep dive on this, um, next week, but, um, is, is maintenance, which is a huge, a huge topic that, you know, we made a lot of progress on. However, we, we haven't placed that within the context of budgeting and what are we doing? And, you know, I remember when they built the seniors, and it's like, oh, well, you're gonna now have, you're gonna carry this load of cost now just with this maintenance, and that was just so esoteric, you know, at the time. It's not, it's real money.
We included it, eh, because it's important and it is tentative, it's lacking, but in terms of the, um, I can put it off if it's a tight year and having from the long-term perspective, it's sort of like capital. It's also complementary to capital and its maintenance of your capital items, and if you don't maintain it, your capital expenses are longer. So that line between cap and, um, non-capital is a puzzle.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, you know, so, you know, a couple, the opens, I think, are sort of the pension. Now, I want to touch on pension obligation bonds as one way of funding. Any way in the history of advisory, you look after pension obligation bond. Towns that don't have any pension obligation systems, structure, or, or, if there's a means to fund it through, through a bond.
Sure, funding.
Pension?
That's right.
So in the course of twenty years, you fund some for free cash, some from bonding. And the other thing is, if you were to be capital stabilization, what percent of organizations and average town leaders would be able to back that? And how much of that is from, uh, maintenance or, uh, the average challenges for maintenance? To, to, um, and you mentioned, um, I'm not sure, Harvard Mass, it's heavily managed, it's very similar to. Housing costs, population, um, income, variation, housing prices, cost for services. It's one of the pension. It doesn't.
Yeah, I, I, we didn't discuss this in depth in the committee, I'm speaking for myself here, but my instinct would be that best practices in the field is at least as important as a benchmarking of specific rural communities, just because they can be behaving where we've been, maybe, I mean, there's nothing to say that they, where they've landed is the right.
That's where it goes. Population bonds, yeah, and somehow structures or that operating costs are not impacting significantly.
Well, the next town committee meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure I completely understand that, but certainly, I mean, the, one thing that struck me working on this and going through is part of it, the evaluation report, is all that the budget would be. Um, is that in some respects, we're not doing, the picture isn't as dire as sometimes seems when you say, you know, our, our obligation is, is forty million dollars, and I'm putting in two hundred thousand a year. The contribution we're required to make is about two point six million. And because we're paying for a lot of retiree health insurance right now, which has to support that obligation, we're actually the last year, what I had available, what was that, seventeen? It was fiscal seventeen, or what was that, twelve? We put in nineteen point one. So the gap is manageable, and it's not, as with capital, it's not completely clear to us what the right number is. That full funding, I think, or from some arguments, we can have a long discussion of this, but it's not absolutely unequivocally unarguable that full funding is the optimal factor.
No, but it, somewhere there needs to be balance, because in, in any case, that arc continues to grow on an annual basis, which then moves funding from other uses, whatever those other uses, other priorities might be.
And if you, if the more you contribute, the arc actually decreases a little bit, because your, the discount rates, this is the actual where I don't plan.
And, and this just needs to be a decision that's made collectively among the leadership.
It's made collectively, it's based on a strategy, and, um, and then it's established as a matter of policy and direction, just the way in my, in the reserve fund.
So I, I, can I just say one quick thing? You know, over the years, you know, both of us were chairman of the capital budget committee, and we always felt like advisory wasn't, wasn't, wasn't willing to step up and take this role. And I've always thought about advisory as managing the, the income statement and capital's managing the balance sheet, and we collectively get together to manage the cash flow statement. That's how I think of it in financial terms. And so I personally want to encourage you guys to take leadership on this and really help us get our arms around it, because I think moving forward, this is gonna be a really big issue. And if we don't have context for talking about it, we're gonna learn a lot.
We'd be happy to do that, but for the long term, also look at, if that's how, so that should be done in the long-term terms.
It should be institutionalized.
Uh-huh. Um, the bylaws don't mention the by. Many towns have a finance committee, usually it's around the, the Wellesley, but our bylaws do not give that to advisors.
We have a proper staff and a finance director, so I think that's the, we have to figure out how best to, to manage that. I, I only wanna move us along, like Kevin is saying, whatever he would like to say, we wanna, because we have our HR update, our HR director on the town.
I think structurally, this is really, to reinforce, is a good thing to do, and then we are somehow institutionalized when we get this kind of free fee before we do our budget measures every year. And I'd like to see, and I think it'd be better to get it built right into our budgeting process when we get this message from advisory. And I think a discussion like this is also very helpful, just the discussion itself. I also think it would be very helpful if we did this with the capital committee too, and we would, uh, build in, and they send us their thoughts as we, before, as we're doing that budget, and they come in and sit down, and we get to get that longer term and get their capital, um, input from that committee, I think it'll be, has the obvious things that we've been discussing tonight in terms of benefits. I think it'd be just a huge benefit in terms of us all working and communicating well with the committees. General, particularly around this budget issue, so I, I, I would encourage that we do this every year, and if we could, it's not too late to have the capital committee give us their input too, is how they see the upcoming year going. I wouldn't mind doing that even this year.
Yeah, the, and I, I'm hopeful that we will have kind of the three of us, the capital advisory and, and selectmen meet, you know, soon, probably in early October. This is the second year that advisory's done this and helped inform the, the, the budget message, which is for next upcoming FY twenty. The only reason capital isn't in at this point is because the charge for the capital budget is actually to the town manager to create it. You know, and he uses them to, you know, flesh ideas in the historical, so it's his capital budget that he presents to us, that if that, when he's ready to do that, then we'll have the capital committee come in and advise and like, and that, and that's kind of how.
So we'll do that then this year.
And that's absolutely gonna go forward and.
Then let's look to build that into our, our calendarization.
Yeah, I think capital budget can help maintain that forecast.
Yep.
You know, I, I think, and they can do the due diligence.
And also too, I want to institutionalize our regular communications with major committees. I really think it.
You're gonna love what we have in store for September eighteenth, because we, because we are gonna have some of the major committees come in and, and report on, um, their work, so.
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, um, on PEB, if we charge the.
Yes.
And we do the, because.
Yes.
Seems to be one of the logical things that, um, we want, we need to see, this is heavily in this commentary, this, this is that the PEB to come up to us and do an evaluation and figure out what a number would be, whatever it would be, where we can retire the thirty-five million or whatever it is. I would think that that calculation is not easy to do.
That's the ACI.
Yeah, which we can't afford to do.
It's, so PEB is on, Tim Davis will report on.
No, but I understand, well, I actually think I charged would be kind of. Is, is that, and I understand that, that whatever your act came up and it sounded realistic, what I'm saying is come up with something that is realistic. So that's just, that's the formula. Good, but I'm talking about the PEB doing some strategic thinking and thinking long-term and coming to us some proposals that probably would have to work in the five hundred, seven hundred thousand perhaps a year. I just throw that out, we don't need to debate it. But something that, where we can make a commitment as a town, and then it may be fifty years, maybe seventy years, frankly, our, our S and P and our evaluators, they don't care as long as you have a plan, because we're considered to be ongoing. But let's at least see what that plan would look like. Well, we can say, if we did this, and it's six hundred thousand dollars a year, in seventy years, or fifty, whatever it is, and then at least we would have that. That study, I think, is worth it. And I hope that somewhere in our charge to PEB, they do that, because that's a practical thing and it's a, and it's a real deliverable that I think would be important to, to the community, so, uh.
And the other issue is, is we, we haven't done, we're gonna get a recession, right? I don't know when, I don't predict, but we, we should be looking at how do we manage, you know, we lay in all these things, these commitments, and then we should be looking at what happens when there's a downturn and. And my guess is, you know, new growth is gonna fall by thirty, forty percent, what does that do? Again, we're creating context for having all these conversations. I get really worried about folks going off and doing something and then not coming back and thinking about it in a holistic way. And I think that's really the role for advisory, is to create that holistic view of how it all fits together.
And so, and I'll just add my comments in. When I first came to Selectmen and took a course, I want the various things to do, I was taught by the state. This is exactly what the advice we came in, is supposed to be too. So I just wanna say that this is exactly what we need you for doing, and I'm really glad that you're doing it and do more.
Some ways you're describing really is sort of the finance committee model. And I did the same thing, I went to the mass, I was like, I had made Tedney Slatter his finance committee, and I'm listening to these people. It's not a, oh, well, the asset advisory committee, or even, it's not paper, what's written in the chart.
So, I mean, so this all needs to be worked out, and there's no, there's no, you know, Diane mentioned that, you know, we may be stepping on Don's toes or Chris's toes. And I don't see it that way, I mean, there are a lot of towns that have figured out how to make this relationship work and have provided, you know, again, context for discussing all the financial issues, so I'm sure all these issues can get solved going forward.
I, I hope I didn't say.
I just had one front of me. I, I, yeah, I, I wouldn't have even think that that would be a conservative if it is here. It absolutely shouldn't be. Uh, I mean, this is nothing about the very nature of what our self, half-self governing grassroots, where we function as a government is for there to be active committees that is working in conjunction with, with, uh, employees or regular full-time staff. So that's, uh, should never be a consideration. This is nothing but making us operate what not only is the best way to operate, but the way we need to operate if we're gonna preserve our way of life here in Cohasset. So, uh, uh, let me, this is, you know, I, if there's any thought of that, it should not be, there's no, sure, it is the nature of the being on a small grassroots, normal community like Cohasset we all want to participate in and do it, is to have this, this kind of active function working with our government, so it's absolutely.
So, thank you advisory committee, thank you all advisory committee members, sure, the audience. Um, and I, I don't wanna rush past a really great conversation, but, um, I'd like to invite up our HR director, special assistant to the town manager. I don't know whether to say it first or, or last, but I'm gonna say it first and get it over with. Um, this is Lisa's last week, we have time in Cohasset, and, um, I think.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations and fairly well, I, I just think.
Yeah, well.
It almost, it almost goes without saying how much, um, how far we've come over the last number of years on the interview for Chris. And I think HR and an HR function was literally one of our top priorities in town. And, uh, we have just come so far through your thoughtful, steady, smart, intuitive, really well-mannered, um. Sure, good, hard work, so, thank you, we are gonna miss you, we wish you the best of luck. Um, so, jump right into our agenda items, update.
Um, okay, so, um, first, I'm just going to cover possibly one of the most important things I've been working on since I got here. Um, and that is, um, the employee handbook and policies. And we kind of had scattered policies and I've been trying to pull them together in different ways. Um, I can say that we have a, a, a great handbook, in draft form, it's been reviewed by council. Um, it, it is here right now, as you can see, a few more changes. But they're all, you know, relatively minor, they're just things, things that need, just need to be kind of cleaned up. Um, so where we are right now is we're in the clean, clean mode. Um, and then, um, we will have, um, council take another look at it, make sure that we have everything in there that needs to be in there. Um, that everything is updated, you know, we keep getting new, um, laws and policies in the state of Massachusetts, so we need to make sure that those new ones are getting in there. Um, after we are done with that, um, we need to look at department head and staff input, make sure that, that everyone understands that it's comfortable and if anybody has any suggestions or ideas, we'll wanna incorporate those. Um, definitely circulate it through all the unions and get their input. Um, we'll have to, there's potential that we may have to impact bargain some things in here, but, um, hoping that we can keep that to a minimum. Um, and then finally, when that's all done, hopefully later this fall, it will get put into your hands for review and adoption.
Can you sort of summarize what's in there so clearly, it's some of the federal regulations and then sort of more on a local?
So we have, um, a table of contents, it's pretty significant. Um, the first section is governing principles of lemon, those are like a lot of the laws, so, um, equal opportunity, um, uh, pregnancy, accommodations.
Sexual harassment.
Drug-free and alcohol-free workplace, you know, basics, you know, everybody kind of, this is, this is how we work here. Um, then there's operational policies, which include, um, employment records, working hours, um, timekeeping, overtime, um, your paycheck, direct deposit, performance reviews, so kind of just general operational things. Um, section three is benefits, it talks about eight of the holidays, um, vacations, personal leave, sick days. And again, all this is, um, uh, if you have a collective bargaining agreement, those would kind of look super significant in here, but it's. Other than that, um, lactation breaks, workers' compensation. Um, employee assistance programs also in there, long-term disability benefits, so benefits in general. Uh, section four is leaves of absence, personal leave, military leave, um, FMLA, small necessities, parental leave. Most of those are standard federal policy. Um, section five is general standards of conduct, and this is kind of the catch-all category.
Right.
Everything from personal visits and solicitation at work and how you should, um, behave when you're in a work atmosphere. Um, smoking, operation of vehicles, so kind of just the, kind of catch-all for when you work here, there's.
Do we have, and this will be for town side employees, because these are something similar in schools.
So schools have their own.
And, you know, so one of the, one of the things we talked about like eight years ago was computer use policies.
Yep, so there is one in here, um, it's not super specific. Um, and I think that there's a reason for that, it's kind of, you know, this is, if you have access to any town devices have tablets, mobile phones, computers, software. Network, yep, it covers like a, a, anything that is kind of system, computer or mobile device related falls under this category. And, um, it's, it's generic, but, but pretty clear that, you know, this is for business purposes and, um, you know, we can access your device at any time and you can only use up for these things, so. And I'm happy to, to share, you know, different parts of you, but there is, there definitely is something.
So at some point, Chris, is this something we have to adopt?
Yes, so, uh, what will happen is when we finally wrap this, where, when you're ready to adopt it, it comes, replaces the existing file. Far, it replaces what's in the file, and also goes far down that basis. Now, going forward, this could be amended on a regular basis, staff remuneration, so you don't have to go back. We set up this spec cuz of a couple of years ago.
Well, replacing the file, Tedney voted on.
Better once, so Ted, Ted may already approved the file, since like we did that the manual. So, we just haven't done the file law, we haven't done the manual for you to adopt, yeah, so once you adopt it, that was a couple of years ago.
It's just become part of the law, is it?
No, it replaces, basically the file refers to the manual, adopt the method.
Sort of be part of the law by reference.
Kind of, the authority to adopt it is to get the file and yet sign.
Um, the other thing that includes at the end are three different sections that have to be signed by each employee that say, I've read the hand, I've received the handbook and I've read it, um, sexual harassment, so there are, you know, specific things that people have to sign, you know, in the file. Um, and then, um, once this is all adopted and people have it and they've signed it, then that can open the door for all the training.
So that's, you're gonna train.
Right, that, that would be the next step would be, all right, we're gonna, all new employees that come in would get trained on the, everything is in the handbook. Here's, here's a rundown of everything that's in here. Um, but there are certain policies in here that we want to do some definite training on. Um, the, the drug-free workplace, uh, you know, supervisors have to have a specific training to be able to, to determine whether someone is under the influence of drugs or alcohol. So, you know, that, that kind of training would have to happen for our sexual harassment, uh, what, what determines what is considered sexual harassment.
It, and, Chris, with that, or Lisa, have we looked into training modules for any of this stuff? And is that like a budget line item that you have in your mind?
So you can do it, you can do the module, a lot of, a lot of places, um, will call in people that are specialists in a specific area. Um, so we can do training modules for like a basic handbook, but for some of the specific things, like our, our council does, comes, will come in and do sexual harassment training.
Really?
So it, because there's, it's, it's one of those risks, you know, when I first came here, I kind of presented, here are all the risks that, that, you know, that HR can help resolve, and that training is a big part of it. So you don't wanna just leave that up to, I read it online and I, you know, signed up on it, some of them really need to break into a more.
Lisa and I were in a program that was, oh, that's what you. And it was, it was funny, some of the stories, I was told, these things were happening, well, actually, we, they were inside too, and I was actually surprised. Uh, and, and it's really, you know, if these things aren't placed, but they're not normalized, it's like. It's pretty nice to have us, you know, I have a question. So are you coming back in front of us in a couple of weeks, is that how it's gonna work?
So, um, right now, my plan is to pass this up to the interim HR director, who's gonna be Paul Norris. Um, so she, and she has, um, also read through this and given some feedback, so she's gonna be fully involved from here on out, so she can pass it up to. But Lisa will be running our workshop next Tuesday night, when we go through goals, objectives and draft the budget message and all that kind of stuff.
So, you know, from my point of view, it'd be nice to have you present the things you've accomplished over the last year or so. And then it'd be really nice to hear where you think we need to go, what are the, what are some of the issues and things that need to get done to get us to a hundred percent on helping with this whole project? And it, it doesn't have to be elaborate, it can just be a one major, but I'd really personally like to hear what you've done and, you know, where you think we need to go.
Exit interview, Chris?
We actually, we're happy to have assumptions.
I have a lot of questions for you right now, but I'll give you some from formal.
No, actually, it's interesting, one of my questions is, what, what is the one, two or three things that are left on the table not going that you wish to, you, you had completed? So, and, and again, if you're preparing this in the documentation.
Yeah.
So I, I don't have anything in documentation now, I, I do have things in my head and I am gonna give you a quick little rundown on, on some stuff, so. And you each may have your own kinds of things that you, that you'd like to see. Um, so let me, let me run through what I've done and then I can tell you if I were to stay on and some of my goals for this fiscal year, what they were going to be, um, and, and why.
Okay.
I'll, I'll be brief though, because I know. All right, so when I first came to you, I gave you this lovely presentation on, on what HR could do for the town of Cohasset. Um, and I noted eight specific opportunities that I saw for the town to, um, minimize risk and kind of take you to the next level. Um, one was adopting policies and procedures, um, state, federal laws and kind of general procedures about how things work specifically here. Um, job descriptions, they were few and far between when I got here, so that was an important piece of just understanding what everybody does and why they do it. Um, that led into organizational structure and hierarchy. Um, do you remember that big picture with all the purple, all the across the screen? That's what the structure looked like when I got here. Um, so we had this big, very horizontal organizational structure and not a lot of job descriptions. So we needed to kind of define what people were doing and, and, and better structure it for our recruitment efficiency. Um, that led to recruiting and hiring, um, having a process to what that is, knowing, um, what we were recruiting for and why and going after the right kind of people, so we can get the best people in here. Uh, once they're in here, objective and expectation setting, telling them what we expected of them, what their job was, following up, um, setting goals, making sure that they were kind of advancing, um, themselves and, and their, their jobs. Onboarding and offboarding, so they, they had everything they need, needed to be successful, and, and they were leaving, making sure that there's a transition of that, that job knowledge. Um, performance evaluation, um, good for everyone, how am I doing, am I getting the support I need to be successful? Um, what can I improve on, um, what's narrative that's, that's great, but I should continue doing? And then, um, the last piece was internal communication. There was, um, what Chris started, we, we both knew there was a lot of silos, a lot of people kind of working independently and they might have been doing a great job independently, but without working together, you can't accomplish as much. So, um, being able to communicate, you know, across lines, um, with boards and committees as well as within different departments, that was really important. Um, so keeping that in mind, so that was what I, that's what I thought you needed when I first started here. Um, so here are some of the things that, that I have, um, been working towards and that the team here has definitely accomplished. Um, first of all, we, we looked at that organizational chart, we created one, um, that wasn't just kind of a PDA. We created a moving, um, dynamic organizational chart, um, and then made changes to that structure so that Chris had a reasonable number of people reporting to him and that he could communicate well with them and that they can communicate with their teams. Um, so we, we really improved that, we streamlined those communications. Um, we, uh, created more meetings, um, and not just like dumb meetings, but meetings where people could share information. Um, not meetings about meetings, which are my favorite kind, um, but meetings where people could kind of share what they're working on and see how across lines and be able to work better together. Um, uh, committee and board interaction, trying to improve the communication of them. And then looking at job descriptions, once we're there, what is everybody, what's everyone supposed to do? Um, so that's kind of the, the first, first level. Um, we created a, um, a job application, which didn't exist before, that people could fill out when they weren't in, in, in here. Um, we standardized job postings so that they were all, all the same. We created a kind of a more fun version for jobs that we needed to, to work a little harder to recruit on. Standardized offer letters, recruiting processes and candidate communications. So I, I first thought, oh, I'm not gonna spend much time recruiting, but when I look back, I think that there, since I've been here, there have been fifteen to twenty positions that, um, that we have, uh, filled. Um, that's onboarding, offboarding, um, some required a lot more time and some were pretty quick, but that's a pretty good number. Um, uh, that also included records checking, which a lot of times fell in my lap, so standardized records checking, making sure we're asking this, you know, same kinds of questions. Um, onboarding process, actually having a process, do we have everything in place for them? Um, and then I moved more on, so once they're all onboard, um, what are all the things they need to know? Training, um, training for boards and committees, training for staff. I created a, a training, Tuesday training program last year where every week we did a training on a, on a new topic. Um, FMLA, um, there was a lot of that. I, I really got a lot of, um, experience with FMLA that I didn't expect to get. So, um, creating a, a formal process for FMLA processing, making sure we had all the right documentation, making sure people, uh, we're, we're still working on it. There are still people that, that don't fully understand, um, what FMLA is and how it's a benefit to them and how it works, partly with other, um, leads. Uh, but, so that's still out there. Um, evaluation, forms and processes, letting people know how they did, um, and keeping track of that. Um, the handbook, uh, spent a lot of time working on that. Employee appreciation and recognition. So we did everything from like the annual barbecue, we bring in an ice cream truck, you know, on a, on a particularly tough week. Um, we started recognizing retirements, um, differently and kind of more formally. And then, um, last year, we started a thanks for your service, the twenty-five year plus, um, which was really, really great, and I hope that that continues. Um, on the downside, we also have a more formal disciplinary pro- process and termination when necessary. Um, personnel records management, um, we have, we set up a rate system over the federal collectors office where they, they know kind of what's in people's records and what should be in there. Um, staff counseling, you know, having staff kind of come and just talk, but a lot of, a lot of people just need that, I just need to talk through this. I think there, I have an idea that I wanna figure out, wanna make it work, or I have a problem and, and how to address it. Performance management, and then, um, the thing, kind of unique thing that I feel like I brought to this was, I brought HR out to the people. So as you know, I didn't have a, a, a specific office, I had my nice traveling office in my bag and sometimes I sat at the police station, sometimes I sat at the library, sometimes I sat with the rec. So I kind of moved all around the, the different town offices, just to get a better handle on what they're working on, what they're. Just to get a better handle on what they're working on, what their challenges were and maybe more available to them. People would, would tend to just stop in more and, and discuss these.
So can I ask you that? So do you think that was a, ended up being a good thing or a bad, I mean, it was because we didn't have space for you, but.
Believe it or not, I.
Bad reason, but do you think it actually?
If I thought it was, if I thought it was bad, I would have kind of pushed harder for it, but I think it actually did end up. I, I know more of the people in town. I wasn't like a silo in HR department. I actually was able to feel more helpful. So for me, I felt like it was definitely a good thing. Um, and I would recommend it to all HR professionals, you know, go out to the people. Because they're not going to come see you unless, until it's too late or unless they have a problem. Um, I, you know, I was able to kind of talk through and create new ideas with people just by going out.
Catching their feet in their space.
Catching up at the coffee maker. You know, I don't think that that happened. The ideas are generally in them.
That's what's kind of unique about the resiliency, right? Is you have employees in all different physical buildings, like, like a college.
I'd have a totally different experience when I was sitting in, um, the senior center to when I was sitting in DPW office, right? You, you get to feel the challenges that they kind of face day to day, whether it be, you know, the facility related thing or the clientele they deal with. You know, it was different personally. So I feel like that was a really great thing. Um, just a few more things. I have a whole page. Um, collective bargaining. So we spent some time, you know, every few years actually bargaining the, the contracts and the MOUs. Um, but also spent a lot of time just working with the union representatives, um, you know, dealing with issues day to day. Um, goal setting.
Which you helped us with.
So totally my, I loved it. Um, but set, uh, setting helping that you set yours as well as staff set goals. Um, because if you don't set it and write it down, you're not gonna, you know, necessarily follow up on it or remember that you did it.
Right.
And then, um, block communication updates. And so when the, um, coordinate workers actually came out or, um, when the parental leave changed. Just making sure that everybody was have knowledgeable of what those changes are. And, um, and the last thing was kind of project management. I spent, um, a good amount of time assisting with software projects. So the Harper's, Harper's piece, looking at all the different companies that were out there and whether it was going to be good. Um, helped, uh, fire department with flexible, uh, which is a policy system, um, for them and E permitting. That I got to get a little, little system from back to. So that, I feel like that covers kind of a lot of the areas that I wanted to work on. Um, if I had, if you, if you got me today, um, and said, hey Lisa, what do you think we, where we should be going next? Um, I think the, the employee handbook and the training are critical. Um, I think I, I feel a little behind the eight ball on that. Um, I know that we're going as, as fast as we can, but I feel like that that's really, really important. Um, and I also feel like we are just starting to, uh, appreciate the benefits of a really good performance evaluation system. Um, making sure that it's done more frequently, that it's not just an annual review, that it's creating good communication between, uh, a supervisor and employee. And kind of changing the, the atmosphere of that discussion. So it's not like you're doing this wrong or this is really great and you need to improve this. And more like where, where can we go? What can we do? How can we help you? Um, Chris got in and really involved with that, um, this year. And then the last piece is just kind of going back to the job descriptions and, um, and organization. Um, but I feel like that that's just very fluid. It's always changing. As, as the needs are changing, uh, we just need to look at somebody's position and say, are you doing exactly what we need you to be doing? With the new world that we're in now and, and how does that fit into the bigger picture of, of the staff? So that you're not just keeping a position on because you find it forever. The widget maker isn't needed anymore. We need something.
So having heard all this, the next question that I would ask is. Paul's going to be an intro, HR person. So we're going to have to actively search for a new HR. And we're making the decision to have a, a, a full-time HR person, right? I mean, it's pretty clear that there's plenty to do. It's, um, so again, like I said, this is a, um, an older, well, double take, uh, five years ago. And, and again, I, um, Steve and Harlan were all functional, functioning. Come in and find out what happened, child, it was. And, um, I will follow up and say. Very grateful for the soundbite she's made, coming from Ashland, which is not easy. Um, and to stay connected when she's, even when she's on vacation, weekends. She works on fields, but tremendous, maybe breaking down the barriers. To go from not having HR to having people not only like it, but which would. And the police department, which is not exactly the fuzzyest in terms of this kind of stuff. She's not in there, just jump right inside the table and then people come to her. Um, when we did the first play Bible for, I don't know, it was packed, it's been packed ever since. Supply recognition. You always, you're never quite sure how it's going to work out. And it was incredibly, I, I mean, I think all of you got a lot out of it too. I think it was great. I also do the management by walking around. I don't think any of my offices, they affected, um, on a regular basis. Time you gotta be in there, you gotta make the most out of these. And, uh, and I think it's a, a great, Lisa's setting, great. Foundation here for the work, helped a lot. This is the one to go. We clearly need to have a full-time HR professional. I also think the job evolved. I think Lisa got into some areas that, you know, that it wasn't just sitting in an office doing the. Project and management, strategic planning, field evaluation work, um, which has been helping bring departments together as part of this, you know, tighter, uh, work track. So I don't have seventeen, I don't know what was that. I mean, I have to see the pool. I mean, we've, we've talked a little bit, you know, she's scouting, I'm scouting. I'll probably post something very shortly. Um, and then see what's out there. I, I, I've talked to some folks too. I mean, we always keep an eye out and see what's out there. I don't know if the next person will be this, clearly the next person won't be this. Uh, but this clearly great foundation that it's developed. Uh, I think, I think, I think this is just more than pay for it. I think it shows the value we've gotten from, um. Just of the things that have not happened alone, much less the really incredible things that have happened. I think we have a, I think we have a, I think we have a more engaged workforce, better trained and is having a, looking a better place to. To keep that, we need to continue to engage with the most, single, most important resources. Part timers, late building, or the summer kids at RAC, or the folks who run our finances, our teacher for our kids. Usually, and I think that we, what the most important HR has really been to focus that yes, you. I appreciate all of you supporting me because it, it hasn't always easy, but it's, it's hard to show a report every week. It agreed, but I hope that you've all seen it. I hope the residents have seen it. I think we have, have been a lot of.
Very different organization than it was five years ago.
I want to thank, uh, our law on Sebastian's game. Uh, thank you for.
It's my pleasure. And I, I, I think that I would not have been able to do what I was able to do without every one of your support. Um, and enthusiasm actually, because most people are totally bored by HR. I'm probably putting you asleep talking about all these things that excite me. Um, but.
We're risk averse.
We love you. Everything you do. But that, but that enthusiasm and support, like it's not just support, like you enthusiastically support all, all of these efforts. And it would not have been successful without, without all that and without the day-to-day support that, that you offered this program. So. Keep that up and you will continue to have success.
Thank you.
We give her a round of applause.
Yeah, makes you want to.
Thank you. And we'll see you next Tuesday after your day in Ashland. How many of your updates?
I'm being late. I'm, I'm fairly pressed. Um, cutting a bridge. So the bridge rails are being installed. The pedestrian rails have been delivered. Um, the opening is still formally set for October. I'll pick us across the caps with the weather. Sooner. I know people have already been strolling across the bridges that is paying, if you're not doing that. Um, there is a ribbon cutting in schedule as well. We're actually hoping to get the governor down, uh, and perhaps some other officials and everyone else.
Since that can be.
That's the bridge. Yeah, sometime in October. It's going to be working around the, the governor can do it. It's going to work around this. There's still going to be some work. Still some finishing work that'll be done. There'll be some weapons where the keys to have the bridge open and. So Ted and Rec don't have to worry. They'll be, the bridge will be there for the next several days, which should work. Uh, and people will be able to officially walk and hide their fish off it pretty soon.
I will tell you, there was brisk activity down there the other day, walking across and dogs and bikes. And I was standing at the chain link fence, like looking in. Like, you know, I was a prisoner. People were like, oh, you can go across. And I said, no, I'm going to look at the official. I cannot be speeding on that bridge and you're not supposed to be there either, but.
Uh, okay.
So, I know, I know the rail.
So many halls. There's nobody going to be in there with just a cross traffic cars to see.
So many people walking, they can just jump in.
I need that we arrest them for one year and make a sweep of the bridge further too. They gotta sweep the bridge for two years.
Is there a second? Second, you can't, it's a motion.
Town Hall, um, the, the, we, uh, retained a, a, a covenant, a, a systems analysis that was completed in August. We're hoping to see a draft of order in July. So, uh, once we get that and we have a polish issue. Uh, of, of the building systems analysis in town hall. Today, uh, one of the reasons a window, air conditioner sitting on that window is because the main system is not, it is, is starting to fade. Uh, so it already keeps this meeting reasonably comfortable. Uh, fortunately, there were a couple of those, there was just a case. So that was pulled out, Brian and Jason and Michelle, pulled out of the box and popped it in there about an hour.
I think it's, although it's made the sound a little.
Yeah, that, that, that's unfortunate. It was either that or we.
No, it's good.
A very cranky board. Uh, so, uh, hopefully, but it's going to be like just the next couple of days, it's going to be outdoors. We may have to roll those out a few offices. Um, so that's a status. Hopefully have that, those information on the systems a little bit. Really deep analysis.
So Kevin and I had a conversation about the buildings. Kevin suggested that we should move quickly just to get the outer shells prepared and painted. And it's not going to affect, I mean, I think it's a great idea and I, I second it. I think we should probably, I, I'd like to put it on the agenda for maybe the eighteen. Take a half an hour, talk about, you know, what we can do today to, you know, stabilize and maintain what we got going on here. Kevin suggested, you know, we do a paint job on all of town hall. And, you know, and, and I thought about it and I think that it's the right thing to do. We're not going to be wasting money on doing something like that.
I, then there are. I'm Kevin and, uh.
I was trying to be polite. I was speaking on a big softball, you know?
No, I, no, this is, you know, I've had actually several people mention it to me and a couple of citizens, you can walk to the downtown hall and then they're walking around. Hey, when it does seem, it may be pretty logical and a necessary thing from a, just from a maintenance point of view. Because we don't want to go through the winter with that, you know, the rain and the fall getting in that pan. The reason for painting not only is the appearance, but it helps preserve the wood. And I think the big, good argument that I hear about this is the fact that not painting it is making it much more conducive to me and riding. And more dangerous than the town, since whatever we do, we're going to have to paint, you know, town hall. Uh, secondly, I think that the citizens of the community would be, would like to see it in town hall painted. And, um, so that was it. I, I think it's worthy of us discussing it as a.
We'll talk about town hall next week and, and definitely. We, this would be likely something we would need to, to get special town.
No, no, no. There are ways to get this. We're not talking about, about, about. There are ways to get money to get this done.
Um, I mean, I, I, we, we have been talking about, um, things inside that need to get done just for. So I, we, we can most certainly process this. I, 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 I wish it was as easy as. Unfortunately, it's not. Uh, that said, I understand, believe me, I don't like to look at it any more than anybody else does. And I do not want to, uh, any further. Um, so I, I'll open it up.
Also, I think the citizens and the community don't want us to be like sitting on this.
I know, I mean, through another weather, I think so.
Yeah, I'm thinking mostly of old town hall. I'm not talking about new town hall. I'm just trying to preserve the, sort of tune there, you know?
That there, um, there has been some assessment done of what kind of, I, 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 I was.
We need to let it out. Yep, yep.
Yes, that's true. I, I, you know, there, I mean, uh, we can talk about funding and the basic things and. We stopped them. Now we can't do that. We don't have the staff.
No, no, we should.
We did discuss it and that's, you know, that's one reason we had it on every single agenda is just to get any of these topics used. You know, there are people in town that think we haven't painted it just because we want to make the case to do something where it's, which is just ridiculous. I mean. But, but that's part of the study is figuring out what we need to do and can do right away.
It is important. I believe, I fully understand. The gates, which you don't see. The electric, still ready to go up there. There is still literally nineteen there is wiring.
So that's not the problem we're trying to solve. We're just trying to, we're trying to protect the outer shell of the buildings. That's all. And, and we realize there's much, much more to this, but I think this is a step we can take that gets us.
Where we need to be. I'm, I'm hoping to give as much good information as I can. Early in the year, I don't think people will be listening, but I can get some. I'm, I'm going to have a first cut next week. So yeah, we should.
So part of the goals and objectives will be discussion at town meeting, at town hall. So we.
So you have some, so what kind of.
If there's any updates, we can talk.
I mean, I, there, there are some things that have to be addressed there. Regardless of. So, um, just quickly on the national grid, uh, there's something, um. We've been working to set up the staff at the National Grid for some months. Um, we have some contacts, you know, right? Lockout of gas workers, forced a lot of assignments, which is a conviction, uh, a little problematic. That said, um, the recent outages that have happened, which I told you sometimes, for loose guy reliability issues, meaning that they're happening in not perfect weather conditions. So they're not weather related. It's not like, you know, a tree came down in a storm or a snow froze something. Uh, so we had, uh, some failing, uh, in the main, you know, we were like Orwell. Car got a pole, yeah, car got a pole which knocked down something that, I mean, sometimes cars and poles, but like the thing that would knock out so much. The, um, so, uh, we've been talking about getting ourselves in a place where we go to this meeting. Questions. I had a meeting earlier. The alternative, if the chairman actually works with the, with. Chief, uh, uh, unfortunately, DPW and, and the fire chief is becoming one of them. I'm expecting expertise. Um, and we talked about some next steps. So, um, uh, Steve and, and chief, uh, so we have to. And then it's something that I'm trying to integrate into this. Official, official decisions. Um, I could do a first great run to identify some of the, Adam, Andy, you pulled this out.
I like to do that.
Yeah, yes. To, to, to point out some issues. So we talked about things like. A voltage coming in, all of the things that seem esoteric, but they're fundamental, fundamental problem. One of the things that Steve thinks is a problem is that the town is powered differently in different areas. So you have a higher power coming, higher voltage coming to one end and a lower to the other. That means you can't cross connect those, those grids. We're not really focused. Uh, the fact that we have voltages potentially coming in at different levels in different parts of town. Is, is, is not covered and needs to be addressed. Now, one of the things that Steve will be able to do is clearly identify. So we're also working to set up our representative to get that staff, that staff unit, trying to hold that up sometime. Uh, but that's got to happen. Uh, and then.
So can I ask Paul a question?
Sure.
You know, we had a couple of failures in the last two weeks. Was that a result of the power coming to the town or the town screen?
One of them was power coming to the town, uh, through, through, you know, the, the long. The other was, was, it was, you know, it's hard to handle, which knocked out a transformer.
The thing that's frustrating though, this to me is, is that's about as far as you get. It's not that, of course, it's the middle. But that's, this has been going on now for months, if not now, a couple of years. So when all the power went out. The best answer we've had so far is that, is, is that the power is going on somewhere between Norwell and I get the re-explanation of the grid instead of King Street. Well, why was that? Well, we don't know. And it just seems to me, I don't find that acceptable, that we already sit at a point where we cannot get people our. If we can't, let's get out ourselves and find out at least why we're not getting the power. Because it wasn't a trade, you know, like we would, they did it the other night or some other reason. Because there's a one, you know, uh, but anyways, there, there, there's. Uh, but anyways, this, this, we're really first of all gonna figure out why we're having outages, this is complicated, but there apparently is a lack of will somewhere to get it done. We need to find out why we're having these outages, and once we know why we have these outages, how are the ways, what are the alternatives that we can take as a town or community to, uh, to, to resolve it so that we solve the problem, and then we have the discussion as to which one of those that we take. To let this go on and on and on is just highly unacceptable. The studies that we did with master plan committee and the municipal vulnerability committee, which just completed, number one concern, I mean, the citizens are, are animated about this, is that, is that their number one concern in this town is, uh, the power outages that we would increasingly have, and it's, it's a security risk, it's a health risk, it's a safety issue, and it really is something. But it's one of those issues that apparently, I, it's so big and nobody's really in charge, this ain't never getting done, so we've got to try to do this, and the best place to do this is the sort of selectmen who are gonna get behind pushing this and making it a priority, and I'm taking an interest in doing it, but I don't need to be doing this, there's a lot of people who are interested in this. Keith Silks, we've got an expert on it apparently, we've gotta get this, we gotta get this pushed, this is something that needs to be done.
Yeah, there's the, there's the why, and then there's the, the, the timing and the restoration, and, and then the communication piece that go heading into the winter that I wanna make sure we have a sense of, I mean, there was one big storm last year, and the fire chief's wife, as you remember, became an unofficial ombudsman, and that, and that served a really important purpose, like, a lot of people calmed down. When they knew somebody was hearing them and could say, there's three national grid rocks expected three o'clock, but that shouldn't be a private citizen's responsibility, so that, you know, there's this big picture.
Yes.
Why, what can we do, kind of in the macro long term, but then, you know, how do we, how do we communicate with our residents when there is an outage, and how do we optimize the quickest, um, response time, restoration?
But more importantly, what's really going on with our, I mean, it sounds to me like you're talking about these different voltages going through, it sounds to me like we have a patch job, we've got an older system here, you know, who knows, maybe three or four different aged systems, and, you know, you know what it is, it would take some time, energy, and money to upgrade our grid, and we've never complained about it, so we're not getting.
Exactly.
Don't you think, Kevin?
Yeah, and, and also in, unfortunately, unfortunately, in this town here, I see this on social media and elsewhere, is a number of people are increasingly resolving, you know, this is probably happening in your neighborhoods, they're getting their own generators. So as soon as the lights went out the other night, one of the things that I knew about it was my dog woke me up because the, his generators went off that weren't there a couple of years ago, and that sets them all off, but it, what it is, is in this community, so that helps hide the problem a little bit more, so.
Totally.
Therefore, we become a group of people where those who can afford generators are gonna be taking, but the rest of the population, I find that unacceptable.
No, they let you see go out for a week or something.
To bring it back. We lose power here, it's typically weather related, and it happens at worst of times, if you're in the middle of the summer, uh, it's the worst of times because you have tool spoilage, you may have air conditioning loss, and, and, and older population, that can be dangerous. Middle of winter, it's just as bad. It's heat, uh, maybe heat loss, and again, uh, I'm just, sorry, pipes, pipe freezing, hot property damage, I, you know, I, I had a flood in my basement. I've got a, I've got a water mitigation system, the only part supply of it is power. And, um, yeah, you know, Kevin tells a story, I've already checked in with the cost of putting in a, uh, putting in a generator, and I thought about, and the more I think about it, the angrier it makes me, because the utility is by definition monopoly, the monopoly is there to serve, it's not served. And it's gotten worse, I, Kevin and I have lived in this town approximately the same length of time, I think Kevin's got a couple of years. And we would traditionally lose power once or twice a year, in the winter, uh, living on Farrelly's lane, and we didn't think much of it because, you know, we would go out three hours, three hours later it was back.
It wasn't that long.
It was, we lose power now, and it's down for a while, I actually did go out last winter after the last outage, and bought a generator, not a, not a, it's been on and so on, I was actually gonna be home to start it up. But I'm not going through that, and that's, the generator's not enough to power the house, but it's enough to power the pumps, and maybe, maybe it turns on the. This is, but it's, it's, it's Michigan, things, you know, the, or any crazy or silliness, it's Michigan, I think we should be putting up with it simply because we broadly, as a community, uh, might be able to afford some mitigation, it shouldn't happen. And not everybody can afford that mitigation, so the unfortunate sociological or political thing is, is that you then become a beauty of the, uh, energy haves and the energy have nots. Some people can afford the many, you know, I saw that on Facebook the other day, when this thing came out, too, a couple of people said, well, this is a terrible problem, they repeat this stuff like, oh, Steve was saying, I'm, I'm gonna put a generator in, cause I can afford it, you know, but then, what about, I'm thinking about, what about the vast majority of people in town who can't afford that, so, we shouldn't have a community that's like that, something who's zip up their generator and everybody else freezes. But the key inconvenience is huge and the danger is huge, and there's a lot of small children, and people are actually, we all know this, it's in our neighborhood, they have to evacuate their homes after the, after the electricity, the stuff is out for, for four or five days, but psychologically, that's pretty difficult, it's a financial burden that shouldn't occur, it's dangerous, it's danger. So, some, somebody's gonna get really hurt here, an older person's gonna, who are very vulnerable population are gonna get very sick, or god forbid worse, young children, and this is a, if a government, I go, we, you know, we need to be able to protect the safety of our citizens in this way here, so.
With, you know, lots of work and, and productivity even on the front, national grid, it could be, it could pass it, that's, that's it, so, um, move on to the swipe and call up Steve.
Um, I, I've come with, uh, Chris, what's the latest on the top of the. Uh, we're scheduled, it's the executive session, okay, thank you. Uh, we, uh, I, and this one's for, and, and, uh, you and I both received a note from Mike Eschen, asking a lot of tribute to Stephen.
Yes.
Is that something you could, could, they, they go on for?
Yes. Yes, I, I've been in touch with him and, uh, Rec, Rec commissioners, and we will have a conversation probably, I don't know, probably October, but I, but I talked to him.
Bye. Um, and then last but not least, uh, we received a, a note from the chairman of the harbor committee encouraging you to take a look at, uh, well, not just the, or another, other, uh, relevant areas of leadership, steering, uh, best, like steering committee, land board, harbor, et cetera. To think about, one of the things that we would want to achieve with real estate renovation surrounding the harbor hall, and his thinking was, well, you know, we got into a scramble when a developer came forward with a great idea, what seemed to be a great idea, but there's a, uh, a rapid and loud, if somewhat small, pushback. But that's an important, uh, an, an important event to, to recognize, understand, and incorporate, because it can help to define a plan, and raise it successfully. Uh, and of course, the one thing that was missing from all of that is, well, once the town hall is established, and I, as we enter into our, uh, goals and objectives discussion, this is one area which frankly, we could take on immediately by simply expressing our objective, our, not, not for the entirety of the project or here outside of our areas of expertise, but what is it, what is it that's relevant or is relevant with respect to potential harbor we develop? Those properties are clearly for sale, uh, and then, I'm sorry, rather than the two, Atlantica, the salt house, the capacity property, are for sales. Uh, and, and, you know, and there, we've seen one project be proposed and then withdrawn based upon, uh, the ability to reach contract or anything, and so on. But rather than be beyond the able, let's think about it in advance, what do we want to achieve, because that will help the guy, any developer coming in there, that's it.
So, it's definitely gonna be discussed next week, the goals and objectives, and then, um, the harbor committee, that's one of the presentations we're gonna have on the eighteen, so on.
So. As we get on to the harbor committee, I will provide on some of this. Uh, the really big issue here is if, if we, we're now at risk to have a developer come in and take one of the projects instead to do this holistically. And we'd like to avoid that problem as much as we can, because we may end up with development that none of us want, and this is an opportunity for us as a selectmen to show leadership here and say, you know, what, what are we willing to support and what are we unwilling to support in terms of development of harbor? So, I think it's really important to think about this, maybe talk to Kevin, you know, before we meet, I, you know, I think everybody should be thinking about what they want. What is it we want out of the harbor development? And, um, you know, there's been a lot of work done, so if anybody would like to see some of that work, just send me an email, and I'll send you off, uh, you know, the charts and the graphs and the, uh, the, you know, the plot lines for the harbor.
Do we have those uploaded on that website? Can we?
No, we have guest permission.
From here?
No, no, from, from, from the, the, from the last project.
Oh, 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 okay, yes, great.
The problem here is, parameters not finished with their work here, right, so we're, we're jumping the gun, because we have to jump the gun.
But I think if we have to talk about certain things.
Yeah, and you know, and the other big elephant in the room is the, the morph, you know, it's, uh, the morph over the salt house, you know, there, uh, it's gonna be a problem, in my opinion, and we've got to come up with, you know, I think we should have shared understanding what the problem is, what the scope is, and what are some of the alternatives.
Something on that I would like to know, but just maybe when the eighteen harbor committee comes in, um, is, I know that there, there was a plan approved by the plan hall for the restoration. Presented, they haven't, they heard it, they had the hearing, and they haven't voted on it. So my, my question would be, ha, if they had approved a plan, um, you know, what, what, what's the timeline for implementation? Cause that's, that's a material piece of the story.
Only got out of that was an extension of the time to actually fix the problem.
So there was some timeline given, but it's, it's not.
Yeah, but it's, and, and I.
And, and.
It's gonna be a lot of pushback on what was proposed, I mean, my, my personal opinion is, some folks are gonna be very unhappy.
Right. We had somebody come for public comment period on that, um, saying that it was completely appropriate, and we said, it's not, it's not gonna matter, so, but.
Again, it's one of these complex problems, and if we don't handle it holistically, we're gonna end up on the rocks, and we're gonna end up with, as Steve says, Michigan's, you know, and, you know, again, it takes a lot of work to keep it in context and keep it holistic, but, you know, we should just provide that leadership and make sure we get it done. And I think the next four or six months are really critical.
On street pay.
It is smooth, maybe, but that's, worries me, I, I'm speeding now, because the pod's been out for the problem.
Be grateful.
No, actually, it didn't prevent it at all. A long time, uh, but that.
Yeah, it's, it, it, once, you did a, you did a very nice job on, on the finished work, I think it's.
Okay, yep.
You know, we hear this thing, a long range planning and so forth, from advisory, and Captain only talk about it, thinking about, so, I got an email today, that the long range planning committee meeting that we had scheduled for next Monday was canceled, that was just the only message that we got. So, uh, I, I just think that it's kind of disrespectful to all the members that I committed, it's suddenly just canceled, excuse me, but, so it's just cancel the meeting and then just not say anything to them, like, it was canceled, it was, whatever it is. Um, and again, I point out that the long range planning committee is again canceled, and we're not taking that committee seriously, and that's just another example of itself. I vented myself.
No, and, and you know, the logical place for the long range planning committee is under advisory, you know, it should be in a, a subcommittee of advisory, and, you know, the advisory committee's responsible for providing direction.
So, one of the re, so I talked to Chris about that particular meeting, because it took me by surprise, because I had the minutes from our last discussion about it, which was, we selected, we only have one person, we haven't appointed anybody to that committee, uh, except you, which we appointed in April, and then Steve and Jack's terms went up, so we, we decided at a meeting in June, and I can send you the minutes, that we would readdress that committee and talk, come up with a charge for them, come up with a focus, figure out if they belong under advisory, or how we wanna take those, so it's not because these, these topics or the financial discussions are important, to me, they're the most important thing we're gonna do this year, and, and if I do nothing, um, between now and, and the end of my, uh, tenure in this particular seat, then to bring all capital budget and advisory and all of us and the financial team in town hall together to talk about things as, as substantively as we can, then I'll completely fail, that's my goal. That committee wasn't charged, and we had a discussion at this table about not charging it till we had a sense of where we were gonna take the budget discussions for the year, which are gonna happen over the next two meetings, so, the other thing was, the PEB was meeting that night, and I, I just felt like, well, first of all, we didn't have a committee to, to, to meet, that was the biggest problem. So, and then the second thing was, I thought, oh, PEB, they had scheduled that, they're being long in advance.
It was also, uh, I apologize for.
Well, we discussed at the last meeting, and you discussed.
We discussed, I'm just.
This meeting, this is what we're gonna do, and we're gonna have three or four, and, uh, just.
The, 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 the data, the temp was never locked down, and it's, 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 it's my fault that I got posted, that said, I'm hoping that all of you will give a little clearer sense of direction.
We, we need to charge the committee, accumulate the committee, and appoint members to the committee, and that's the structure that we want, and that's a discussion for this board to have, so, that was, that was my only, I reacted like, wait a minute.
So we can talk about this next week.
Yeah, why don't we do it next week?
And, and, can we, can we?
Part of our.
Yes, I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you a file, so we can plan, you know, this is the, uh.
Okay, so we have two sets of minutes, the twenty fourth and the, uh, Septa, uh, July twenty fourth and August fourteenth, and motion over.
So, sorry.
All is in favor? I agree, this topic's been recently suggested, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So.
And all is in favor?
Hi.
Great, great, go, go.